Okay, good morning, everybody. Staff meeting for Tuesday, August the 12th. We have four things that we're going to be discussing today, or four items. So let's get to work. Tom, take it away.
Thanks, Chairman, for the kickoff there. And the four, the four items are, and they're working from simplest up to most complex. It's going to be, this is going to be a tough meeting. We have a lot of important things to discuss. First off, Tanya wants to talk about, we've had some discussion last week about the KAC. Our input to KAC for their agenda, I think we need some type of affirmative from the commission this morning. I think Tanya will lead us through that on what we should put forward there. Commissioner Meister has been working along with our county councillor on the Northeast Sedgwick County Park. Worked with Congressman Estes's office, and so we're going to give you an update on that and hopefully get a way forward there. The third item will be a discussion about the Riverside Hospital capacity to house Regional Forensic Science Center. And the task at hand there is not necessarily what that building could be used for in the future for the Sedgwick County. It's whether Regional Forensic Science Center is a part of that or not, because that's, there's a CIP budget for next week that has Regional Forensic Science Center upgraded in it. So that's the point of decision there. And then the fourth item is, we're going to shift into a budget discussion of potential amendments to the recommended budget. And we'll lead that off with a resolution. We have talked as a, as a group for a year or two about a resolution to separate out property tax and sales tax expenditures within our existing budget. There's a couple of resolutions that went to the commission in February. We agreed we'd talk about it in the fall. And we're going to, there's actually a third option for that today that we'd like to talk about. So we will present that to you as well for discussion and then talk about budget. So a lot happening, but Tanya, if you could start off with KAC.
Morning, Tanya.
Morning, Chairman. Commissioners. Okay, so as the manager stated, last week, we talked about submitting a legislative request form to KAC. So what you have before you is the form that we would submit. And we have five items as we discussed last week. So I'm happy to walk through this. What I took was basically the items that we discussed. So the first item, and I've put in parentheses, was to request this for KAC legislative priority. And that was to support legislative, excuse me, legislation appropriating additional budget for the county treasurer's tag offices. These functions are state mandates with local property tax funding. Yes.
So. That second sentence almost sounds like the function is a state mandate with property tax funding. Well, you want to say it's a state mandate, but requires additional property tax funding?
That requires, okay. Sure. Okay, then the second item, we bulleted, or we kind of summarized as property tax appraisal reform. So with that, then comes seven bulleted items. First one is legislation, either A, appropriating additional budget for the county appraiser's office, or B, the state taking over these function and offices. Second bullet then is to rename the county appraiser offices to state appraiser on behalf of each county. Third one then is tax bills sent out twice a year. And Commissioner, help me if I'm stating this correctly. June tax bill includes only all local tax billing. And then December bill includes only all state tax bill.
The other way around, and it's December and May. December is local government and May is statewide. Anything is tied to USD districts.
So December is local and then May, you say, is state.
So we have December and May payments today. I just want to have a mere mark.
And then the next four are exactly as Commissioner Bluebaugh had stated last week, and I haven't been good through those, but those are exactly as he provided to me. Okay, then item three then is to enact language that allows counties to take action to protect the public from dangerous animals while also ensuring that the owners of such animals are afforded constitutional due process. Fourth item then is to amend KSA 64101D to the non-uniform of respective counties so that counties like cities would have the possibility to consider alternative methods of publication in addition to traditional newspaper publication, which could result in taxpayer cities. And then the fifth one then is unilateral concessions. County has no representation. Then we state continued support for right of counties to vote on unilateral concessions. That we could choose by commission points.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Those are correct. Okay. So then the rest of the form is just, you know, describe the history on the issue, other questions. Does the need, why does this issue need legislative resolution, on and on questions. I'm happy to go through each of those questions if you would like, but it's just, you know, the answers that they need on this form. The next step in the process is they take this, then they set up a meeting for all the counties who submit this and then ask for understanding of this. There's a couple of meetings. I would be in that meeting and then any other county representation. I know Justin sits on their board. I would ask Tom Henry or Lindsay or if commissioners want to sit in that meeting as well to kind of help, help discuss this. But that's kind of the process. So that, this is what I would turn in. And then the due date for this is August 20th, so next Wednesday. So there's still time if we need to manipulate this a little bit.
All right, Tanya, thank you for that and all the work you're putting into this.
Yeah, I had some help from legal, of course, and Lindsay.
Chair, I appreciate everybody. Yeah, questions?
On the number two, the property tax, the third bullet, I really like the idea of two, two buildings. Can you define them? Which goes out in the first one and which goes out in the second?
The December. So again, the December tax payment covers all your local government, your city, your school, township, improvement district, cemetery district, anything that's considered local government would be in your December tax bill. And then your, your May tax bill would be everything that starts with USD for me, two six zero. And that includes the 20, 20 mil statewide tax levy. So I have five jurisdictions for myself that start with USD two six zero. So about 46% of my tax bill is USD two six zero and the remainder is December.
I intend is to combine one tax bill is just the USDs plus the 20 mils.
That's the main. And it, and it's interesting because the, in our fiscal year is January through December, so the December payment is just before that. And the state's fiscal year is, is Ju- July 1, their payments are due right before that. So for me, there, it makes a lot of sense. And by doing it that way, it does bring a lot of education and highlight to the fact that we do fund schools. That, that and I think it also highlights exactly what do you get? I really like the idea. In fact, I'm not sure it's on this list here, but I want to see us add some type of a informational flyer with the tax bill that says your tax bill today provides services at the city and county, whatever, and list those services. So they write that check. They have some awareness of what they're paying for when they write that check. That value added to me does a lot to, to calm down the people being so upset about paying taxes, have no idea where the taxes go or what they do.
So are we good to give Tanya permission to move forward here?
The only thing I would say is on that annexation piece on number five, there is a statute that we could reference that I think is a better statute. There's two statutes side by side. The unilateral annexation law that cities typically use gives cities all the power, but there is another option right behind that that I think is a very great process that empowers the county to be involved in unilateral, I'm sorry, be involved in approving city annexations of unincorporated properties. That, that, again, we don't have a dog in the fight because it doesn't change our tax revenue one bit, so. I would like to, if possible. You know what that is, Jason, or Ju- Justin?
Rob, question how? Yes, I'd be happy to. It's KSA 12-521, this is statute.
Drew, impressive, Justin.
Don't ask me too many. That's one of the few I know.
I think that's good. Yeah, everybody good? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Tom, next one.
Commissioners, Justin Wyner, county councillor. I have, in front of all of you should be a draft of a, it's got a big draft watermark on it. It's a draft letter. As you all know, Sedgwick County owns the property that comprises Northeast Sedgwick County Park. It's about 650 acres in the northeastern part of the county near 77th Street North and 127th Street East. We've talked about it before. There's an encumbrance imposed by federal law which limits the usage of that property to public outdoor recreational uses. A number of occasions in the past, the boards expressed an interest in trying to lift the encumbrance that applies to that property. The only way for that to actually happen to fully lift it is through an act of Congress. And to that end, Commissioner Meister's spoken some with Representative Estes and also his chief of staff. I yield to him in case he wants to describe the nature of that anyway.
Well, I just ran it by Josh Bell. I think some of y'all know him and Representative Estes, if there was any appetite to go back and try to get their encumbrance lifted. And they both thought positively. We had a, a good follow-up conference call which made Justin and myself feel more, more confident than, than before. So we sent him a letter that was just more generic. We just wanted the encumbrance lifted. We didn't want to earmark or say anything. And Josh came back and said, it, he goes, because it is park stuff, if you could say that you would use some or parts or whatever for further enhancing your park and things like that. So obviously, we've got potential at Sedgwick County Park, but it's the ball diamonds out there you get. So we expanded that. Actually, the key paragraph that we added to the generic one was that second from the last where we say could probably be reinvested to enhance and upgrade county-owned culture and recreational properties that serve a vital community, meaning Christina, anything anything that the public facilities, that's sold. Precisely, that paragraph is in there, but Josh thinks that that's what would help us to get it done.
And, and Commissioner Meister summarized very well the, the discussions on this. And again, I think the aim here was to craft a draft letter that the board could consider and take as a formal step of the board asking Representative Estes if he would consider introducing a bill on this to Congress. Again, this is just in draft form. I'd be happy to stand for any questions, hear any comments or suggested changes from commissioners. I think the intent had been to probably, if there is an intent to move forward with this, to place this on next week's county commission agenda.
Yeah, I'll just add that originally, just to request to lift the encumbrance had no impact on any of the decisions we make, but adding that paragraph kind of obligates us in a way or puts us in a request mode that says, well, if you do that, great, and we'll use that. So more powerful. So why we have to come in front of the body to see if you all are okay with that.
Other questions? So this will go on next week. Does this need to be by all commissioners or just signed by?
The intent, the way it's drafted is it would be for your signature as chairman on behalf of the board. That's part of the reason why we also wanted to have it in front of you all to vote on. That's, that's the intent. Of course, if you guys want it to be signed by all commissioners, that's completely fine as well. You can do it that way.
Well, I'm fine with moving forward as this. If anybody objects and wants to do it signed by every commissioner, just let Justin know and we'll go from there on Lindsay. Easy enough.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Pete.
Okay, now we'll move into the discussion about Riverside Hospital and Regional Forensic Science Center use. And I think we have Justin Graham is on Zoom too. Tanya, you can interview him. So take it from there.
Commissioners, I think we talked about Regional Forensic Science Center maybe two or three weeks ago. And at that time, there was a request or consideration to look at perhaps Regional Forensic Science Center at the location of Riverside Hospital. And I indicated at that time that we could come back today and perhaps give you some cost estimates for locating Riverside, or excuse me, locating Regional Forensic Science Center into Riverside. We worked with Justin Graham, with Schaefer Johnson Cox and Frye, who is currently working on CIP for this project. They also, Schaefer Johnson Cox and Frye did the building assessment back in 2021, when we were looking at that building for the administration building. So they have knowledge of that building and were able to provide us with what we have today. The cost estimates, before we get into that, I do just want to say that this is based on square footage numbers. So they have knowledge of what the needs are for Regional Forensic Science Center, but they've not done what we would say is a test fit or putting any type of consideration into how Regional Forensic Science Center would lay out into Riverside also. So I just kind of want to put that, that out there. Okay, let's jump into the numbers. So what you see first is, of course, the cost for the building purchase. That's been indicated to us that that would be $5 million. The next line item then is estimates for the building exterior. So that is, would be examples of rough windows and the exterior. So that's an allowance of $4 million. The next line item then is your mechanical, electrical and plumbing infrastructure. And that is for the entire facility. So that is line item at $110 a square foot. So that is a little over $19 million for the entire facility of Riverside Hospital. Then we get into what the cost would be for strictly Regional Forensic Science Center. That's 57,000 square feet and that would be at a unit cost of $250 a square foot. So that line item's out to just a little over $14 million for just the Regional Forensic Science. Now, that two or three weeks ago, you had indicated maybe a possibility of looking at home care, health, CDDO, aging. So we consider that general county space. So that is at a unit cost of $180 a square foot. What we did was we took that at the remainder of the square footage or what would remain if you take out Regional Forensic Science Center. So that remaining square foot is a little over 118,000 square feet. So that unit cost then, or that equals out to 21 million. Then we have miscellaneous costs. So we have to modernize the elevators. I think back in 2021, three out of the five are needing modernization in that building. So we've got elevator costs, we've got water repairs. There was a water main break there. That's why EMS had to come out of the building. And then we've got some environmental remediation mold, asbestos, and then methane exhaust. So keep it an allowance of $4 million. And then we want to be comparable to what our current CIP is for Regional Forensic Science Center. So our current CIP is 20 million and that includes owner costs. So owner costs are typically your contingency, your architectural and engineering fees, your furniture, fixture, equipment, your utilities, your signage, your movers. If we have any inflation, inflationary costs, that's also an owner cost. So we took that and added that to this cost as well. So that's approximately about 25% that she would add to the cost. So that's at about 16 million for this. So in total, if we were to move into Riverside Hospital, and I will state these are estimated costs, you're looking at total of just over $4 million. And then I'll just take you back to what our current CIP is for Regional Forensic Science Center, just a little over 20. I will again state that, or Tom mentioned that Justin Graham is on Zoom if you've got questions. We can get into that. He did state that, you know, again, we'd have to realize that Regional Forensic Science Center does have a sophisticated mechanical system. So that's indicated here in their mechanical, electrical plumbing infrastructure, those costs. And then I've also got Andrew here who's working on the current Regional Forensic Science Center CIP budget. So this point before I have to answer, actually, that.
Okay, I appreciate the work. It's kind of that. Justin, welcome. We're glad you're joining us today. Appreciate your time. Again, this is just specifically about not any other use that could come of this building. This is about Regional Forensic Science, the narrow scope, does it fit here? So we'll, we'll stay focused on that. Any, any questions on these numbers? Kind of big? Anything at all?
Well, I was gonna, I'll add that. I had a thought when I first saw that number. I thought, okay, well, how much overestimate it or fluff, whatever word you want to use, even, even cutting it in half and still. Looking at existing noise.
Does the general county space, does that need to be done? I mean, all at once, I would assume is some cost savings just for economy of scale for contractors and everything on site. But I mean, a good portion of that is allocated towards what would be a home care campus, right? So to look at 84 versus the 20 isn't true. Regional forensics, apples to apples, that actually solves another issue by looking at that correctly. Okay.
What this does is sets up the building now, a piece of would be used for Regional Forensic Science, but it sets up the rest of the building for any other use that the commission deemed necessary in that building, whether it's home care or health or whatever.
Home care complex is on the watch list.
Right.
But it is estimated at, right at 39 million. I just looked it up.
Thank you.
If that helps add the 39 plus the 20, that would kind of be with those two projects.
And Tanya, you said when you were kind of breaking down the math, about 14 million of that is more specifically allocated towards regional forensics.
Correct. That's just to do the interior model for.
For this. But that includes their MEP needs specified? No. Okay.
So.
That, because that 19 million, I assume, covers the whole building. Right? 175,500.
Yeah. So basically, if you were to, to just do Regional Forensic Science Center, you would have to add that 110 on to that 250.
Yeah.
Okay. So then you'd have to, to build out that space, but.
It all need to be done. I'm just thinking what you're putting on that project versus another. Okay.
I don't think you could go into the building and just do the mechanical, like plumbing.
Yeah, I wouldn't. Yeah, no.
All right. Kind of, kind of my same comments is really not apples and oranges. And then a lot of these costs, if I'm understanding it right, is, is setting such for the over, the opportunity to have a huge county campus where we can bring in other real estate and close out other leases.
There was some discussion about using part of this building for a public health department. It would, like I said, place was on Ninth Street and on Central both. It would both relocate to this space. Yeah, Tanya, you might, so we had talked about a lot of things, health department, home care campus, CDDO, aging. There's not room for all of it. We'd have to choose, and you might go into square footage. There's, it's not everything can be included in this building. You get a lot in, but not everything. You want to talk about that?
So you can't, in this particular scenario, where we've got 175,000 square feet. If you're, if there is a desire to put Regional Forensic Science Center and CDDO, aging, home care, health, you can't put all those departments in there. Somebody has to come off of that list. So, and I can speak of square footage off the top of my head. I might have to look at it and get it specific. I know for home care, we were thinking 80,000. Beyond that, I think. Help anyone that.
We're short 22,000.
Okay, so we're short 22,000. So somebody has to peel off of that. Let's just say if you peeled off Regional Forensic Science Center, then you could probably do the other functions. And then you would take that down to, you would take off that $250 a square foot. You would bring that up to 175,000. Or for the entire my making sense there.
Absolutely. Yeah, I get it. Justin, do you have anything you wanted to add? We have it here. So if you have anything you'd like to add, we'd love to hear it.
Sure. Well, I think, I think as presented, Tanya's done a good job of, of answering the questions. You know, Riverside is a, it's a older building. You know, there's original construction and probably and four or five additions to it. And so there's just a variety of mechanical systems, aged systems. And so so there, there's a lot of work that needs to happen there. And I think that's reflected in the cost estimates that have been presented. And so beyond that, as, as Tanya said, we haven't done any test fitting to see how, how these various departments would occupy the facility. You know, there are some challenging geometries, I would say, with the facility. And then so I think we would want to take a hard look at, at really seeing how the departments could move in. I know when we considered this building four years ago for administrative offices, there were some challenges with layouts. And so but you not say that it couldn't happen for these other, other departments, but it definitely needs to be studied.
Okay. Other thoughts or questions for Justin? Well, I, I would say two different veins we're tracking right now. The first vein is we have a CIP amendment we'll be voting on for the Regional Forensic Science Center. The options are what we've been pursuing, which is the current remodel on campus over there where they're at now with the additional building. And then the second vein is that we have a watch list for our home care campus or county campus building that can house, and that's a watch list CIP. What we try to do is see if there's any opportunity to maybe merge the two. In, in my view, I, I'm still going to be in favor of, of the option of keeping forensic science over on its current campus and building that out. We know, I think what I heard from commissioners was that everyone was in, we know there's a need there and we know we've got to make some investment there. My vein, not just economically, but practically speaking and listening to Dr. Sedman, I, I think I'm still going to be in favor of pursuing that option over there on that campus, but I still very much want to keep home care campus as a CIP watch list and start that conversation of what that looks like in the future with this building and other buildings that we're going to entertain. So not, I want delineate and make sure that they're two separate discussions that we're having, but the time pressure is the CIP amendment and what we're going to do with forensic science. So it's kind of where my head's at. Anybody want to add some comment or?
Thank you, Jim. I, I would agree with what your summary and analysis is. I've done a lot of work on forensic science and being on that campus and get into things I didn't know about, like separate air quality and purifying, all the things that's required for a successful forensic science operation. I don't know if that's probably building that you're 84 million, but that's just one example. So I think it works there where it's at. And so, but thank you. This is really good.
Other thoughts?
I do just want to clarify, this is a significant component of the budget for 2026 because it does have funding included in it. So when you vote next Wednesday, this will be something you are voting on. Of course, there's going to be multiple opportunities to award construction bids and all of those things where it will come to you again. But if there is a desire from the commission to remove this or modify it, we would need to know pretty quickly because it will impact the budget book. It will impact our forecast to increase bond and interest that significantly. So I just, if there is any desire to change. So, um, I just, if there is any desire to change, it would be really helpful to know as soon as possible. I think I'm getting the consensus that we'll pay to proceed with RARCA C, but keep this on the table for next year's conversation or CIP. Is that right?
I think that's kind of where I'm feeling a consensus. I think if there's a commissioner that wants to entertain this before the twentieth and making modifications, I would encourage you to go to Tom and Lindsay, and then I'll let you take a pulse of the commission. You need this before the twentieth, you're saying you would like to have it?
This will be a significant impact and we would need some time to work through that.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on this? Okay, I think we've accomplished what we need to accomplish in that regard. Justin, thanks for joining us. I appreciate it. All the work you always do.
Hey, we appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Tom. Number four.
Takes us into the budget discussion now. And to start this, um, I'd kind of like to have Tom Henry come to the podium. And let's talk about the resolutions on, um, to make sure that property tax is paid for, is going toward mission critical services. Um, we have historically talked about this. Commissioner Howell and Commissioner Meitzner both have written plans. Um, the third option is had been authored by Commissioner Wise, and I think Tom can talk us through the three of them, do comparative analysis on that and determine where the commission wants to go from there.
Okay, very good. Tom, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thomas Henry, Assistant County Counselor. So just as a quick recap on where we've been with these resolutions. There were, um, dueling resolutions with, between Howell and Meitzner. Meitzner's resolution essentially asked that, um, there be an agenda item or some ability to speak publicly each year during the first quarter of the year about what was called, um, quality of life spending, which is defined in both Howell's and Meitzner's resolutions is, um, you know, spending of ad valorem tax dollars on recreation and the enhancement of the quality of life of Sedgwick County residents that are not considered core functions of government. Um, so essentially what Meitzner's version of the, uh, resolution would have done is it would have given the commission each year an opportunity to give, you know, kind of direction to finances in developing the budget as to how they would like to see that look. Um, Howell's version of the, uh, resolution then, um, actually went in and put a cap in place. And that cap was based on what we're calling the pledge, which is one half of the sales tax revenue collected in the year that is two years prior to the current year. So we're in twenty-twenty-five, the cap or the pledge amount would have been the one half of the sales tax revenue collected in twenty-twenty-three for this year. Um, and there were some exceptions built in to that for, uh, CIP, for economic development. Um, and there is also an exception for county employees' pay and benefits. But, um, in apportioning the quality of life spending, it first had to be apportioned to employees' salaries and benefits. So, um, that exception would only apply in a scenario where we're only funding employee salaries and benefits through, um, that, the quality of life spending. Um, so what the new resolution does, it, it's, in a lot of ways, it's very similar to, um, what Howell had proposed. And there are kind of three big changes. First, it includes, um, all of the whereas clauses that were incorporated into Meitzner's version of the resolution. Um, those don't really affect the impact of the, um, resolution itself, but it lays the groundwork for why we're, um, taking the actions we are in the resolution as it's drafted. Um, the key change that has the biggest impact is how we define what is being capped. So it is being, instead of it being referred to as quality of life spending, we are capping what we're going to be calling non-mission critical spending with this version of the resolution. And there is a list included as exhibit A as to what those items were. And this was a list created by finance as part of this year's budget cycle, um, and is subject to change. Um, so it, but that is something that each year the commission can come to during the budget retreat and say, hey, there are certain things on this list we want to remove, or we want to add something to this list of things that we don't think are non-mission critical, or we do think are mission critical. Um, so that would be a discussion that would be had at the budget retreat each year. Um, or, uh, the, the county manager would then take that and included as part of the recommended budget. With, and it would be adopted eventually as part of the final budget each year. Um, and the cap, the way it's built and set up is I, uh, pretty much identical to, um, Howell's resolution, the key difference being, um, there is a new, new exception included for, and I'm going to look to Lindsay to describe what this is, but it's, it essentially it's administrative operational expenses that are already included in other places in the budget. So, eh, do you want to go ahead and?
Yes, that's getting into the minutia of all of this. So it's, we pay health insurance and we pay employee claims. We pay all of those things on behalf of the zoo, on behalf of the one employee at Exploration Place. We may play, pay fleet charges for parks, for example. So there's a lot of things that exist elsewhere in the budget that are paid to support these entities. Um, extension, for example, has a facilities budget. None of those things are being wrapped into this. Um, because those are all kind of incidental to the cost. It's not that operating support that we're giving to the departments themselves, if that makes sense.
I just, I want to make sure it makes sense. So compensation is not included, is that?
Go ahead, Commissioner Wise. The salaries are, were already mentioned in here, but when we were going through and trying to combine the two resolutions to get that final version, um, Lindsay had brought up that there were some things that are, are within the budget that weren't really captured here, that we want to make sure that are not included. Um, you know, just like the salaries, I guess.
So if it, it comes back, if you remember during our briefings about the reductions that were done, we listed direct operating support for these departments and, and showed you how that looked from twenty-four and twenty-five and twenty-six. So these did not include those values and I, I, those other values, like what would be a fleet charge or what we pay out of the health and life fund or what we pay out of risk management fund. Um, those are not things, property insurance that get picked up in these costs. And we don't want them to be picked up in this cost. We don't want there to be a prohibition because that's a part of our normal operating structure, uh, as a professional county organization. So we just want to be crystal clear if this thing exists ten years from now and none of us sit here anymore, that it is crystal clear what the intention is. Um, so hopefully that makes sense.
So.
Thanks.
And just to kind of summarize, so functionally, this operates a lot like the, um, Howell version of the quality of life resolution. It's just, um, modifying what is being capped and giving the commission each year some ability to come in and affect what that list looks like. So that'll stand for question.
Okay, Tom, thank you. Lindsay, thanks for the work on this. Commissioner Howell.
It's the chairman. And just a couple of things. I actually don't mind the, the, the name change from ultra wreck to non-mission critical. I think that's a, that's a good change. Um, uh, other than the list that's in here, is that term have any definition anywhere that we, could we add a definition with, what, what we mean by that?
So the, the way that it's built, that list is the definition, um, for the purposes of this resolution.
I, I think we could go a little further. I mean, I think if we were to, to, to try to make it a, a definition, what we mean by that is these are things the county is not mandated to do. It's not considered a, um, an expectation, if you will, of. If you were in a different county, for example, you wouldn't necessarily expect this thing to be funded in someone else's county. You expect them to fund roads and bridges and sheriff's office and election office, things like that. You may not expect them to, to fund River Fest, for example, because they don't have a River Fest. They'll have a Central County Fair, for example. So to me, I, I think if it's something that's considered, you know, um, specific to Central County, that's not mandated or, or, um, not a requirement of statute, that is discretionary, you know, is, is by, by discretion, it could be on this list. And I actually, I can think of, think of some other things that are not listed here, but I think that potentially could be added to that list almost immediately. I mean, I, I have project access, for example, but that's not mission critical to the county government. It might be very important to the community, but it's not necessarily critical to the Central County government as an operational, uh, organization. So that's just another example. So if you were to try to define that a little bit, it might help us just to. Lindsay, have a comment on that? What I'm afraid of is later on, we might say, well, you know, River Fest actually is critical. So let's take this off this list and we're going to go ahead and fund that property taxes. I, I, I want to be very clear. Have some kind of backup that says, no, that the definition of what this means is by definition, that's going to be not mission critical. So I, I think we could just add a little bit of clarity there if that would be reasonable to do that. I, I would like to see that. Also, on the list that is in here, I think we were given a list that, do we have numbers for the twenty-twenty-six recommended budget that we could add up that covers this list and see where we're at in terms of what's that at up to currently?
Fifteen point five million.
And it is, is clear what that, what this is trying to say is it's not a prohibition of sales tax dollars. This is a prohibition of property tax dollars.
Correct.
The property tax laws will not be used for, and use another word you may or may not like, operational support of these organizations. Operational support of property tax laws to these organizations is maybe a way to say, it's not insurance, it's not maintenance of our, of our, of our facilities, for example.
I think the only part that trips me up on that is where there are county owned facilities. So right now TKM is in a county owned facility. There are operating costs that are paid out of the facilities budget to maintain that. Same thing with extension. So I'm not trying to be a roadblock. I'm just, again, long-term trying to think what it matters.
Just an idea, right? And I can accept that it's not a good idea. That's okay. Um, this is first I've seen this. So I'm just trying to uh, respond here. Um, and I may have this confused with the sales tax resolution that I'm also drafting, trying to bring that up. And this is only something, if we were to adopt this, my intent is this only going to be adopted until the sales tax resolution should have passed by the electors would replace this.
Yes. And this.
It has funding dedicated to that.
That, yeah, this includes the same language that was in your resolution that would essentially cause this resolution to expire. Should we adopt a sales tax that would fund these similar types of functions?
And in my, in my sales tax resolution, where I was going with that is there's a, there's a priority given to Central County Zoo. Uh, the cost of employee, employee wages at Central County Zoo, because they were voted upon by the electors in nineteen sixty-six. And so I want to make sure that that is, even though it is, it is, um, culture wreck, if you will, it is, uh, my opinion, they get the first bite of the apple of this fund to fund the employee wages at Central County Zoo. So whatever money's left over then would be available potentially to be spent on these other items. And then again, in this resolution, there's no rollover. If there's money that's not spent, it doesn't stay in this fund because it's not dedicating sales tax dollars. It's actually prohibiting property tax dollars. Or is the sales tax resolution I've, I've hung up with actually does something different with that? Actually keeps it into a fund. Okay. I, I, I am not adverse to this. Um, I think it's a reasonable compromise. I think without stating it explicitly in my resolution, what it did, what it did say, it had a list in the resolution of things that would be included. And it says, and other similar entities, if you will, or it was, it was vague on purpose, which means there has to be a conversation from year to year to just determine what belongs on that list, if anything. If the list is going to change, that, that my resolution gives that opportunity, it just doesn't do it this way. But I think it's the same net, net effect. So I'm okay with it.
Okay. Other thoughts?
Oh, I think the idea on this is to have it on next week's agenda before budget adoption. If that's. Fill your bowl after this conversation.
If the rest of the commissioners are comfortable with that, I'd like to do that.
So new business item before budget. Okay.
That answers one of my questions. Second question, Tom, we had had a conversation with Lindsay Benak at the City of Wichita that was going to put together some strategic direction on how they handle their grants program. And actually something that was rather attractive, what they do with some organizations, not naming Trust Bank Arena, Sedgwick County Zoo, Exploration Place. And they have competitive grants and they do some different things. Is there an update on that conversation?
So I did have a conversation with Lindsay and some staff, city staff a couple of days ago. And what we talked about was they are too deep in their budget process to make changes for twenty-six.
Sure.
But we have kind of worked out a tentative plan that I'm going to roll out to the manager and then to you that would talk about how that could be implemented in the twenty-seven budget.
Okay, great. That's great. Well, I don't, I don't think it conflates what we're doing here. I think this is separate, but I, it is in the same vein of conversation. So some things that they're doing over there, there might be, um, unique that we can implement here as well. So, okay. This will be on as a motion on Wednesday. Tom, thanks for the work.
Not, not as a motion. It will be its own independent agenda.
Oh, forgive me. Yeah.
For public hearings.
New business item. Yeah. Okay. Next up.
Um, I, I think, uh, what Commissioner Wise has the mic, I think she had a motion or two to make, uh, recommended to amend the, uh, recommended budget. So, and I think Commissioner Howell has had some too.
I'll go really quick here. Um, so I've been working with, um, Lindsay and Tom on just what this motion would actually look like for, um, our senior centers. So it was a, a subject and a topic last budget, um, cycle. And, you know, I don't think that it's gone away. So I've got some ideas on how maybe we can try to approach it this time. Uh, so the first motion, we'll call it one A, would be to increase allocation to Goddard Senior Center from within aging budget. Um, that we would, um, transfer budget authority of twenty-nine thousand from within the aging in-home services program to the senior center program to increase the Goddard Senior Center allocation from six thousand to thirty-five thousand. Um, knowing that we have a couple of other senior centers that might have made requests, I think, um, I have an alternative motion that we, that I would consider, um, should we want to discuss that? And that would be to reallocate fifty thousand from within the aging in-home services program to Bentley, Cheney, Mount Hope, Orchard Park and Goddard, uh, senior centers to be prorated within the four based on their requested increases relative to the increased funding available. This would increase Bentley to ninety-five hundred, Cheney to ninety-five hundred, Mount Hope to twenty-seven five, Orchard Park to seventy-two five, and Goddard to twenty-two thousand. Uh, these are the senior centers that made requests that were not, um, uh, successful last budget cycle. And I think that, you know, um, with the work that they're doing and the, the needs that are out there, um, keeping in mind that a lot of our, um, at risk, uh, for homelessness is our seniors. Um, you know, these senior centers are, are filling a gap that I think is very much needed. Um, so that'll be my first one that I'll, uh, and then I'll follow it up with, um, additional thoughts on that. But I'll open it up to you commissioners. If you have any questions, thoughts or preferences.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Howell?
This is a reminder, please let us know what aging in home services program does currently.
Those are funds that are, um, used to pay for in-home services for individuals to keep them out of a higher level of care. So it may be homemaker services, it may be, um, medication management for individuals. It's, it's individualized services. Services happen at senior center pretty high level. They're pretty far away from the front door of a nursing home. These other services are direct services for individuals provided by people that we contract with to deliver those services.
So with, I, I am happy to speak to that because I've got the page pulled up in the budget book. So on page, for anybody who wants to go up later, page five twenty-four breaks out the property tax supported portion of in-home services. Um, it says it's home delivered meals, senior companion, roving pantry, minor home repairs, critical assistance program. And its total twenty-twenty-six budget is about nine hundred fifteen thousand dollars, just shy of that with three point three five FTEs. Of that, about just under three hundred thousand is personnel. Then there's some property tax support that goes into do some grant matches of about a hundred thousand. So that leaves a pool of about five hundred thousand total in contractuals. They spent in twenty twenty-four, four hundred and fifteen thousand of that. So that's why I'm saying, um, I would not, fifty thousand would be the max, I think, would be okay to take from that based on prior year actual spending. But again, as we talked about, the only issue would be if there are additional providers or additional contracts. That, that pool of funding would, would no longer. the only issue would be if there are additional providers or additional contracts, that that pool of funding would would no longer be available for.
That's helpful. Thank you. I I would just say that I senior center conversation is a pretty common topic that we have around here the last few years, it appears. The um I'm meeting with, I think we're all meeting with our new aging director and CDO Director Stephen Chauncey. I think we're meeting with him the next couple of weeks. One of the conversations that we had had at last budget cycle was we were going to let a new director get seated and talk about senior center funding. I think I know that I have a few senior centers that are if we looked at the old model that would qualify on the old model for more distribution, Park City broke ground on their new senior centers located right across street from a sixty senior living housing unit. So it will be busy and they will qualify very, very soon for more allocation. So I think we've got to do some work on this formula and what we want to do with these senior centers. Um, and we're willing to wait for Stephen to get in a seat to have that conversation. So um I think they could they could probably happen separately, but I do think that we've got to finalize what we're going to do on the formula and how we handle senior centers with Central County Government. So.
If I may, that kind of leads nicely. I'm sorry, do you want to go first? It kind of leads nicely um into the what I would call motion one B is to direct staff to propose new senior center funding model for twenty twenty seven budget. Um, to direct staff to complete an analysis of the senior center funding and propose alternative funding models during the twenty twenty seven budget development process. Um, taking in mind, we have that a new director that we would like to, you know, have his input as well and um look at this, not just in this grouping of senior centers, but all of them that we support.
And that's that was kind of my my question there that this precedes, I think, everybody on this bench but me, but this uh conversation got pretty hot back about twenty seventeen or so, and we had staff do that. It brought back a number of ideas on things we could look at and um my opinion, they were they were very problematic. It was it was more of a um I'll just say this, the current formula is is intended to be, if you will, uh, performance based budgeting, if you will, performance based. They have to have performance measures to qualify for that level of funding and then to maintain that level of funding. And if they exceed those benchmarks, you know, for a number of years, then they would be eligible for a bump up to the next level. That was a plan that goes goes all the way back to before I was on the commission here that uh there was some challenges with the previous formula and the aging advisory board did a lot of work for years and work with staff. It was very volatile time. Uh, there's a lot of emotion involved, and it came up with this formula. It's which is a priority based budgeting formula, not priority, a a performance based budgeting formula. And the uh alternates to that, in my opinion, were more based on geographic fairness rather than uh performance. And uh what I did was it took money from those that were performing and 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 to to others in your service that were not performing with the idea that that's only fair. And uh when you when you do it that way, you're creating, if you will, a fiscal challenge for those that are performing. So I would just encourage us, maybe you go back and take a look at the history of this discussion before we make a motion to uh to say that the previous formula was bad. I wouldn't entertain a motion to say we should not, right now, there was a motion from the bench during a budget adoption to simply eliminate or freeze that formula so we would not have any bearing on future funding. These numbers you've given today, Commissioner Weiss, they're based on the formula we're not using. The changes to the senior centers last year, which I'm very grateful for, were based on the fund the funding formula that we're not using. So guess we're using it. My point is, maybe it's not such a bad formula. And let me remind you also, the reason I'm so intent on this topic is because of the nineteen eighty five ballot question. I keep bringing this up. We have a mandate for Central County Zoo. We feel strongly about that. That was the reason I feel strongly about the zoo is because it was it was a a a motion uh went after the people. The people voted to do that, and therefore we should go do that. That's the same with the senior centers. It was up to one mill, and I think that the county has taken a very illogical position that up to one mill simply means zero to one. That's not what the people thought when they voted for that. And I and I have articles I'd love to share with everybody that expresses, if you will, the the understanding at that time, the the rallying that went on by the elderly community to pass this age is elder is aging uh mill levy question on the ballot. They weren't trying to limit their funding. They were trying to actually secure some funding. And I think my one of my concerns is I think we take a little bit too much of that mill levy funding and consume it with administration of what should be block grant fund uh funded programs. Senior centers are block granted. That's one thing that's really good about them. We're not, we we don't place staff in the senior centers. We 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 grant the funds to senior centers to do good things. They have to come back with reports seeing as how we spent the money. And we have requirements on all kinds of things they have to do to be eligible to get those funds. And so I I think to just throw out the formula, this idea that it's unfair is, in my opinion, goes to come back to the politics of twenty fifteen, if you want to know the the reality of that, there was some commissioners that didn't value senior centers. I was coming into this conversation cold, didn't understand everything. But as I began to understand it, it became too late to make change because by the time I uh started to advocate to make change, um we had, um, I'll just say this, Tim Norton has been a champion for senior centers. He's had a very, I think, a really good job of advocating for senior centers. But the majority of the commission uh didn't want to go that way. And uh even Commissioner Unruh and Commissioner Norton disagreed on this topic. So there was a majority of the commission that wanted to basically defund senior centers, thinking that they're a waste of money. And that's essentially how they would say it too. And so my opinion is uh this is the only thing we provide that is um by invitation, everybody who's Central County can access a senior center and get services through senior centers is the the services are there available for people who need them. If they want them, they're there. And based on the mill levy ballot question, I think this is really a good thing for us to do. And again, I don't I don't remember what is in this budget. Liz, you probably know, what's our mill levy equivalent in this budget for fifteen aging programs? Property tax funded aging programs is is how much this year is like point three two or something like point three one.
Uh, point three three.
Point three three. I was I was close. So you know, the the year after that ballot question passed, it was over point eight mills. And it's continued to go down while our aging community has continued, the population of age of seniors over sixty five years old has nothing but increased since then. And that and the projections are even higher. So I don't actually think there's a problem other than the fact that we froze the formula because of politics. That's really what's wrong. I I support what you're trying trying to do here. In fact, I think that this is a better use of money than the program that's on page five twenty four. I think this is a better use of the same funds. And um so I think it's a good change, and especially to brought it to us as revenue neutral to the budget. I think that's even better. So I support the idea.
Quick question. So um not knowing the background here on on Goddard specific, does that fit into the current uh formula? And that's why it's shortened or has been shortened.
Yeah, they're a newer senior center. And so I think just um they've they've shown up on the map with some pretty startling numbers as far as their success in attendance um activity. I mean, Commissioner Blue Ball was caught dancing at their luau. I've got it on video. Um, actually, I think I was using his phone, so I don't have it. Um, so yeah, it is one that's newer um on our radar, but they are meeting these benchmarks.
My question then is, do you think it, do are we, I agree, we are supposed to, we kind of had collectively were anticipating and encouraged that the new director might have his own feelings about a lot of things. It is a he, right? Steve, and so uh with adding fifty thousand to the aging home services or an extra six thousand a year, would that would that put pressure on him to say, I wish you guys wouldn't have done that back in twenty five? Or it doesn't matter. And it is, if we vote on it, it is what it is. So.
I you know, I don't think so, Commissioner. I I think his, I think he understands his mission, that he has to look at this totally. Uh, and a lot of things have changed since eighty five. Um, the relation, the tri-county relationship, the number of seniors that this growing population. There's a lot of things that have changed in the last two decades. I think it's he understands his mission is to relook at all of this. I think that this what is being suggested here today is essentially a migration of fifty thousand from one fund center to another. I don't think it's going to disrupt his plan at all.
Thank you. And would you be able to send out maybe an email to the commission on is updating what twenty twenty five allocations were and what senior centers were funding? Did you do that? I I know it updated. Last copy I had was twenty four. Um, I can go dig it up for the budget book, but it'd be, if you have a spreadsheet, that would be helpful. Okay.
Okay, and I'll I just have one more. Um, if I can keep the floor for just one more second. Okay. Um, I'm not ready to um present a motion on this topic, but I want to bring it up um to all of my colleagues here. Exploration place is a conversation that I think each of us have had probably multiple times on the funding and the five-year agreement that we have with them. And what I would like to do, and I again, I'm not ready to make a motion on it, but I want to let everyone know what I'm thinking and where I'm at, is to direct direct staff and to to help come to an agreement on a payout or a buyout of this five-year agreement. Uh, the reason I'm leaning towards that is it's continuing to put pressure on us as we're trying to hold the line on property taxes um while also supplying, you know, more funds and and needs and public safety, which I think is a greater need. Um, I I I'm torn because this agreement was made between the county and EP five oh vote that we were going to support him as they uh embarked on this EP two. They've had a really great success raising um support for that. We want to see them succeed in that, but um looking over the budget, I I just think that we have the ability right now to to maybe take a bigger swing um if we were to do a a buyout and then alleviate these following years that we would then be paying another quite large portion to Exploration Place um where we're feeling those strains on our budget. So again, just wanted to talk out loud about this, let you guys know that's where kind of my head's at. Um, see if there's anybody that might agree with an approach to at least look at that and spend a little bit of time uh with staff um considering that as an option.
Thoughts, comments?
What's what's the total amount for the buyout?
I think in in conversation, it would be two years of the funding agreement at its original rate. So that would be two point two two million per year. Um, and then the additional funds from this year's budget that were reduced, so that two hundred thousand. So that would put us right around, I think, four point six million. But of course, that includes Adam Smith as an employee of the county in his allocation. And so that would have to be part of the conversation is how that relationship continues. Um, if he continues on the county staffing table, then those amounts would be reduced by his wages. Um, if he was to move, um, I know Justin has has researched kind of the background. Um, there would be some additional work that would need to be done to shift him off of the county staffing table onto EPs. Um, and so that would have to be part of this conversation is what's palatable to both sides and and figure out that dollar, but the most would be four point six.
And and is the proposal potentially to do that in out of ending balance right now or in twenty six? Um, and they would essentially end the five-year agreement at the end of twenty twenty seven as it's current. So to be ended right now, we would not have an agreement with them um between now and early into the future, no agreement uh at that point. But we've given them that full amount, four point six four zero two zero zero, or something around that number.
I think that's correct, and the goal would be that it gives us a little bit of breathing room to, you know, we're talking about a resolution on how we can appropriate um or spend out of our different, we'll call them buckets. Um, but also, you know, we're we've been talking about a sales tax. Um, and so my my goal here is not to just break up and and not support um Exploration Place. That's not the goal at all, but I think that we are hearing very loudly, if I if I misreading um our community, let me know, but that that government shouldn't be maybe upholding some of these um shouldn't be spending as much money on these things, uh that we need community support and and, you know, we're going to be faced with this every year. I don't think it's a new problem for this budget cycle. Um, I think it's going to be an issue that we continue to face, but my hope is that this could help relieve some of our budget for other things in the next two years while we work on maybe a better solution.
I guess I'm trying to understand what's the what's the benefit to Central County Government? This actually essentially commits, it it essentially pays out what we've what what they think we've committed to through twenty twenty seven, and we just get all that money early. Hurts the current budget. What's what's the benefit to such Central County if we were to do that plan? I mean, if it was reduction in funds, I might see there goes a benefit. Or if there was some type of a commitment for what happens after that, then maybe there's a benefit. But I have to know what what is the benefit for us to have that payout today?
I think the biggest benefit to us is we don't have a five-year agreement, you know, that's it it relieves us from that responsibility so that we can refocus on how we allocate and budget in our future cycles. And Lindsay can probably speak more clearly on the financial position. I think if we have the ability to do it and not affect or raise taxes, um but maybe in turn, we we don't have a line for this in the next two years, three years, I I guess, two years? Twenty seven, twenty eight?
Twenty six, twenty seven.
Twenty six, twenty seven. Um, I think that would be our benefit as well. Um, there's a lot, there's a lot of tangled uh tangledness in here that we'd have to figure out. So that's why I'm not ready to to make a motion, but I I really want us to talk about how we can strategize this. If we have funds available, we're not raising taxes. Could we get out from underneath this five-year agreement? And be back at the table, um, maybe not signing five-year agreements that that in theory tie us to um not being able to have the agility to move based on community needs.
I guess I guess my guess my concern is first of all, we didn't budget for this in the twenty five budget. So the authority to make that big of a gift, if you will, to pay them off that much money early. Um, is that something we can even legally do that's allowed in the budget?
I think logistically, it would be a matter of the commission offering under the budget policy, a transfer from the operating reserve of budget authority to Exploration Place. And then, yes, we would need to identify fund balance essentially to cover that. Um, in this year, we are expecting more investment income. Uh, you've heard about that at the quarterly report presentation a week or two ago, and so that would essentially be the source. Now, again, we know that there's other needs too. Um, so so it this would be a competing priority with everything else the commission is is thinking about using those funds for this year, that one-time money for one-time purposes.
I guess, me personally, I I need some time to think this through, but um if this came with some type of a an an agreement that said they weren't going to you know, in Central County for future funding, for example, that would be something I think would be worth the discussion. Um, but I assume I assume they're going to come back for twenty eight and for twenty eight budget cycle, and they're going to say we want two point something million dollars at that point. So I don't know, we're just, we're not, what I guess I have no I no idea what the future holds at this point. There's no commitment to any any drawdown of funds or any, you know, any intent not to ask for funds or what. They could clarify what that would be with something something in writing, that would be maybe a reason for us to move forward. I I don't know what that is right now.
Yeah, I think that some of the conversations that I've been in, and I appreciate both questions, I appreciate the approach and I appreciate the the vetting through is the five-year funding agreement, funding it, finishing it, and then glide pathing over a two-year period of what hopefully will come through a sales tax resolution. And that Exploration Place can be dependent on that source of revenue moving forward, as we've talked numerous times. I don't know if there's been any discussion of what would happen after the five-year agreement as to what that I think the what I've heard clearly from the commission is that we want to see a glide path. Um, as EP two is ramping up, as revenues are ramping up, that there's an expectation that the county support, property tax support in particular, but county public private support will start to glide path itself down. I don't know if that's been quantified yet. It hasn't been in any conversation that I've been a part of to where that's been quantified. I understand the heart of the motion, finish the agreement, give us a couple of years, try to get a sales tax resolution passed, and then we can have future conversations of what that looks like. But um, but to my knowledge, there hasn't been a precise number figured out yet as to what that looks like in uh year six, hypothetically, so.
Let let me ask another question. This is maybe getting into something I wasn't really ready to get into just yet, but in a few minutes, but you know, um, I have a copy of the contract here and I I very, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, but it's so obvious to me in the plain language of this contract, we don't actually have an obligation passed past twenty twenty three. I don't know why this was approved by both parties, if they knew what they were doing, or if it was a mistake. But as it reads, it's it's obvious there's no commitment on the part of the county after twenty twenty three. That's the way the contract is. That's the way the contract is written, and that's the way it's, and it's signed by both parties. So there's that. And then on top of that, there is a detail in the back, I'm getting to the very legalese back here on page six. Termination due to lack of funding appropriation says if in the judgment of the chief financial officer, sufficient funds are not appropriate, appropriated to continue the function performed in this agreement or for the payment of the charges here under the county may terminate this agreement at the end of its current fiscal year. And it goes on. What I'm saying is, we have a tax challenge here. I'll get into this at the appropriate time here, but to me, we're at the point right now where to fund, to fund this budget, as in presented to us by our manager. By the way, it's been a great amount of work done by staff and it's, it's a great document, really. My only problem with it is it, it, it requires more tax dollars than I, I feel comfortable about um, supporting to fund everything that's in this budget. And that, that comes with the caveat that we didn't provide in your budget and manager's recommended budget. $10 million worth of requests, a lot of those even recurring requests. Uh, $10 million worth of requests by our agencies, internal agencies of our, of our county organization. That they want enhancements or additional, you know, staff or things that they need to provide their services. We said no to, it's already, the answer's already no to all of that. And if this captures about $10 million worth of new revenue to fund, if you will, a tax increase to the people, part of that I think is easily justified because inflation, which includes things like wage income and the cost of goods and services for our community, went up about three, three and a half percent. Say 3.25 or 3.3% is a pretty close number. So a, a port, a portion of this budget increase is very logically defendable. But if it gets to the point where it's not, is it defendable? And you get kind of over about four and a half, four to four and a half percent, it's it's not as easily to defend that because I'm looking at things like, you know, new construction, which adds to that, adds to that number. Um, we could defend about a four to four and a half percent budget increase based on just consumer price index and the, and the local economy. Divorce ourselves from the cost of housing. To me, that's not the guideline here. So assessed value, in my opinion, we should just ignore that entirely, because that's really not what should drive this budget. It's, it's, it's inflation. It's the, it's our local economy. If you use that as our benchmark, then we're growing this budget faster than those benchmarks, if you will. And that comes to a point where exploration place, again, I, I, I love what they do. I think it's a valued asset for a community. But they've got a very large amount of money in the bank, and I know there's been a lot of debate about how much money is that? And they have a posit, they have a way to explain it, and we looked at it independently. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm saying it's around $25 million unencumbered in their, in their bank. There's another 20 something million dollars that is encumbered. But about 25 million is unencumbered. So if someone can please clarify that. That helps because if they have unencumbered fund balance, while we're struggling with, we're struggling with our own budget here, not funding agencies. I, I would like to know, you know, how when we, when we, when we appropriate funds here, it needs to be under the understanding that it's critical. This money is absolutely needed. I, I just don't understand how to interpret their numbers on their balances. So just to be clear, there is a fund balance, um, without donor restrictions of over $20 million. It's $21,222,034.25. That's without donor restrictions. And with donor restrictions, it's just under $30 million. So add that together, it's, you know, it's a 58 million dollars, if you add in the, uh, retained earnings as well. So all that together is, is, um, now 54, 54 million. Let's just say 20, 29 and 21 together is right at $50 million. So by $50 million is what they have. Of the 50 million, 21 million is unencumbered. It says without donor restrictions. So with that, again, I know we're in the habit of giving them 2.220140 per year. That's what the contract for 2023 said we had to do. But in light of the fact that we are struggling with our budget, and I think we are. The only way to fund this budget is to, is to capture more of the assessed value growth that I feel comfortable with. So I have some changes to the budget I was going to recommend that I think gets us down to what I, for some, that makes me feel more comfortable about the budget. And if, if this commission disagrees with me and they want to go forward with, with, with what's recommended, that's totally fine. I don't feel comfortable with that. So I would like to, I'd like to see some changes to the budget, but part of the changes is a change to the funding for exploration place. Based on the fact they have unrestricted, unrestricted uh, funds available, over $20 million. So get to that in a minute, but I guess I have a hard time understanding why we would give them oh, just under $5 million today with no no idea what's in it for the county. If they would clarify, for example, they say, they said, we, we have, you know, funds to carry us forward for a long time. We would, we would do this to get us to the end of 27. We'll take that funding and we don't plan on asking for any funds from Central County for some period of time, say five years or something. It might be more interesting to us to have that discussion or that commitment on their part, but we have to have something. I'm, I'm open to the idea, but I just feel like we need to have some kind of commitment on exploration places, part on what they intend to do. Enough of that, about that. I'll, I'll talk about the rest of my discussion, stuff on this, at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Wise, anything else on?
No, we can.
Okay. And there's no, to clarify, there's no official motion on exploration place. What Commissioner Rice was asking for was the conversation of what it looks like to buy out and glide path down. Um, Commissioner Howe is saying, what if we can, if we can get some concrete on the backside of that, that would be helpful. So I might put a little work into that this week and we'll go from there. Okay, um, Commissioner Howe, unless somebody else has a comment? Okay.
Okay. Again, this is just an idea. It doesn't mean this is the best idea. Okay. But looking at the entire budget, I've spent a lot of time reading this budget this year. Again, let me just commend all of our staff that's been involved in, in this. It has been a tremendous amount of work, but I, I reflect on our discussion back in February at the, at our retreat. There was some discussion, it was kind of informal, but there was some discussion between commissioners about what do you feel comfortable with this year in terms of assessed value, assuming that this S value exceeds. You know, it's a high number again this year. Let's say we're going to guess seven or eight percent, maybe nine percent this year. How much of that do you feel comfortable with capturing in this budget cycle? And I think that the discussion at that time was, and I, and I still, I'm still there mentally, that consumer price index for this, this region is about three, three to four, three to four percent. And I know that this legislature is continuing to talk about legislation to cap us to three percent or four percent assessed value growth in any one year. So just because we had assessed value growth for Central County of 8.6%, which by the way, was, it was a surprise to all of us. We at that time thought it was going to be about 7.49%. That was the estimate. And it came in at 8.6, so we had about a 1.1, about a 1.1% increase, which we knew, we, we knew it might go up some. We didn't expect that much. And that's when, again, so which star was talking about a $2 million shortfall, and suddenly, which I was talking about a half mil decrease. Same timeframe this happened because they saw the assessed value was higher. And so using their old mill levy, they were, they were going to be 2 million short. Now suddenly, they can cut the mill levy by half a mil. So at that time, commissioners, as there was discussion happening, a lot of us had said, you know, I think four to four and a half percent is, is kind of like my, my comfort, my comfort factor. About four to four and a half percent. Now, we did not direct our manager to create a budget, which was four to four and a half percent. But we maybe should have done that, maybe we could have done that. Um, we did not do that. So again, our manager does a great job. He talks to everybody, talks to all our staff. And put together the best budget he can that, that provides us a, a, a very, very conservative position, but and I'm not, I'm not trying to criticize you, Tom. I think you did a wonderful job, but it captures 5.5% of the 8.6%. And I don't personally feel comfortable with that number. So I'm trying to say, well, what would we do if we wanted to change this down to get it down to four and a half percent? So I've got a number of motions here of things I'd like to change in this budget. And I share this, the first one is a package of changes that gets us down that very first, this first package. And if you don't like it the way it's worded, there are some adjustments to this I can make. If you want to tweak the number slightly, I can tweak it by, if you look at this, uh, this motion as a zero-sum game motion, if you want to add a little bit to this thing and take a little bit from that thing, we can do that within the motion. But what this motion does, it gets us down to four and a half percent growth rather than five and a half percent growth. Rather than a 0.82 mill levy decrease, it's a 1.1 mill levy decrease. And, uh, to me, this is still, let me just say this, at four and a half percent, and it's, that's higher than consumer price index. And I can justify that a little bit by saying some of the money is going towards an enhancement for 911, a public safety service, which is arguably a core function of government that needs some additional support. I can do that. I can probably fund that through what I consider to be available from the new construction portion of our assessed value. Oh, this first package, let me just read this. This is going to be a little bit long. But please hear me out. And again, if you don't like the numbers, I'm open to tweaking this. Says within the county general fund, by the way, this is, um, within, within the general fund, I move that we eliminate taxpayer, sorry, the planned taxpayer subsidy to the auto license fund due to inadequate state funding and its, of its tag operation in the amount of $951,806. We stopped there for just a moment. That is a consequence of, of, uh, the state not dealing with the problem they've known about for a while. This will, my opinion, this puts a lot of pressure on Brandy and I, I feel badly about that, but she's, there's some things that she can do to maybe take care of portion of this pressure. But the state, the, um, the session is in, um, January, if the state takes action, they may be able to solve this mid, mid calendar year next year, starting July 1st. And so she may only have six months of, of time where the current fee structure um, is as it is today. But they, if the legislature reacts to this, she may have a, some relief, if you will, for the second half of 2026 by state action. And if not, then she'll, she'll have to do some things to solve this. Uh, it could be uh, reductions in staff, it could be furloughs, it could be change of hours. Ultimately, it's going to result in longer lines by the people, and I, and I don't like that part of it. Uh, people have to stand in line longer, there's more inconvenience. I don't like that part, but I don't know that this should be a taxpayer, a property taxpayer problem. So again, I think this needs to be solved outside of property tax dollars. And I know there's another thing we're talking about that I can't go into details right now, but part of this may be resolved. Uh, if she has some, uh, some help, maybe doing some differences with her facility footprint for whatever. So there, a portion of this may be taken care of with that action, should we make that change? Anyway, so let me go on. So this, this would eliminate the 951,806 for that subsidy. Let me go on. It says, I also moved that we further reduce the budgeted contractual amount, contractual payment to exploration place by $500,000. I've already explained a lot of that. Again, it's not that I'm trying to be mean, but where else in the budget can you cut to get to these numbers? It's a lot of money and it's, I know it's maybe very hard for them to absorb that. Part of my answer to that is, I think they have a lot of unencumbered fund balance. And what else this would do is it helps them understand, and I've said this for, I think, two years now, that sales taxes is the future. They have, they have got to get themselves off of property taxes. And I think what this does is helps them understand their future funding. We need them to get on board with helping us get a sales tax resolution passed, not the one we talked about earlier today, but the new ones voted on by the people. Get that from the legislature in January, get it onto a ballot. And when that gets approved, uh, in, in a number of years here, a few years, there's a, a separate fund to fund things like exploration place. And again, I, not, not that I love this number, I don't, I don't love it. If you don't like that number, we can tweak it up or down.
Commissioner, can I interrupt? Can you say that number one more time again?
Half a million dollars.
So expiration place, re, reduction.
Of $500,000.
And that is from, which for additional, from the recommended?
Additional.
So 1.9 is the recommended, so another 500 down to 1.4.
Yeah. And that sounds like a lot. If you don't like that, let's, let's talk about some other numbers in just a moment.
Okay.
Finally, I move that we reduce the number of dispatcher two positions added to the emergency communications budget by six FTEs. That means there's 14 additional rather than 20. Reduce the budget by another, um, 501,735. This would reduce the county general fund expenditure budget total by 1,953,541. And that's, let me read that again. reduces the budget, the expenditure budget total by 1,953,541. And six FTE positions, we result in adjusted property tax levy, I guess I'll read the number, 175,610,942 in the general fund. This would reduce the overall county budget to 591,599 And the total property tax levy that would be then 208,411,713. And the overall estimated tax levy would then be reduced to 27.601. And our, our current budget today talks about 27.28.701 is the sorry, 28.701 is what's in the budget, recommended budget. That drops it down to 27.601 for 1.1 mil reduction. Yes, Lindsay?
So the 25 budget is 28.701. What's in the recommended is 27.881.
Okay.
Sorry, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Actually have it in front of me. I just read the wrong number. Thank you very, very much. Um. Anyway, drops it down to 27.601. That's a lot. Now, if you say, I, I don't want to do the 500,000, then again, are you willing to do, do anything? Um, if the answer is no, then we don't have to talk about much more on this, this motion, but you might say, well, I, I don't feel comfortable with 500,000. Maybe I could do, uh, 250,000. In that case, the number of FTEs we can afford, um, or the, um, or the 911 dispatcher two positions would be a reduction of nine versus the six I mentioned a minute ago. So we'd hire 11 new, not 20 new, we'd have 11 new. And that would, that would leave, if you will, leave the reduction to exploration place to 250,000. I can change that again. We, we have other numbers we could pick. You wanted to go to $400,000, it'd be seven FTEs reduction. So rather than 20, it'd be 13, you'd hire 13. And regardless, uh, those are, we can pick, we can pick in different numbers, but I'm, what I'm, what I'm doing here is I'm comparing, if you will, uh, operational support for exploration place. Those different numbers we talked about versus the ability to fill the dispatcher two positions at 911. Public safety versus a culture wreck. There is some game of dollars. How do you want to divide those dollars? Any discussion or questions on that?
Questions? I, I would only say that I appreciate the discussion. I appreciate the conversation. I some of the heartburn in regards to what's happening with the perception of what we believe exploration place's endowment is and what they believe has led to a discussion around what can they and can they not afford? I only mention that because it was just two years ago, and in a 5-0 vote, the county participated at 2.5 million dollars into EP2, a significant investment. I would only say that I think the conversation this week before we adopt the budget needs to be around, if we invested 2.5 million dollars of public support, are we then going to turn around two years later and reduce a block grant that will put them into jeopardy? That's the conversation if we go this deep into a reduction that we need to have. Um, I, I don't know if it would be wise stewardship of the 2.5 million dollars that we invested in public dollars to then turn around and say, we did that with your money, but we're going to intentionally reduce them more and, and hinder them and handicap them from opening EP2 full strain. I think those two, and again, I can say that while also saying the needs in the community have changed. We have got to fund public safety. 911 needs a major investment. We're committed to doing something there. That's the balance that we're working on right now, but I, I do want to remind us that we put 2.5 million dollars into EP2. And if we go too deep into reductions in their operating budget, it will handicap them. Um, and, and that just seems inconsistent with what we're trying to do to let them move into this new era at EP2. So that's just the conversation that we're likely going to have this week, but there has to be a balance of how we do this. I think everyone agrees. Property taxes funding some of these organizations is not where we want to be. We want to get to a sales tax. We want to get them off of property tax dependence. I'm more interested in a glide path of how we do that. Um, simply because we've invested dollars that are public dollars that I think we need to be wise stewards over. How we do that, we got a week to figure out.
And, and I, I imagine right now the reaction is probably very upset and I, and I'm sorry about that. I want to be clear, you know, clear that we're not trying to be, uh, mean. I'm just trying to figure out where can we, where can we solve this problem? I, I'm open to other ideas. If someone has another place in the budget to go get that level of funding to get our property taxes back under control, I would love to hear other ideas. You know, I want to also just stress here, this precedes all of us, including me, or really think everybody in this room. You know, I want to also just stress here, this precedes all of us, including me, or really think everybody in this room, for the most part, maybe not everybody, but almost everybody. You know, the county started helping out exploration place back in two thousand and five. I'm right. I think two thousand and five. And since then, the county has provided more than eighty three million dollars in support to exploration place. So the county has been good to exploration place, and I don't know if they intended this to be a forever relationship that we're going to continue to help them with funds forever. I don't know if that was understood at that time. I don't know. I mean, they they were needing help. The county stepped up. They did some amazing things. It is a wonderful facility. It does, it's a great asset for our community. But I don't know if this was intended at that time to be a forever relationship, that there would be forever funding. And again, if this gets over to sales tax funds, I think there's a, under the resolution you'll see here soon, I think very soon, there is a uh, a advisory panel that it will make recommendations on how to divide the sales tax dollars. And they they will, um, yeah, provide dollars to things like uh, community development and cultural recreational facilities that we currently support. Um, within reason, but that does create, if you will, zero sum game of dollars. If you want to add more dollars to this one, you've got to live within that fund somehow. And so it is a
It's a balance.
It is a balance.
If I might add to the forever piece of this relationship is that the county owns this forty plus million dollar building. Um, so there is some sort of relationship that we're going to have, whether it be the building or the operations, and these are the conversations that have to continue. But this is a major asset sitting right in the heart of our community and we own that asset and we've got to have a conversation of what that looks like. That endowment was meant to keep that asset up to snuff and keep it in a in a position of excellence. What they can and cannot use of the endowment is conversations that are ongoing. Um, but we we also have to remember that we have a relationship there because we own that building. Um, and that's a relationship that won't change anytime soon. I can't imagine. So.
There is a time in the future, though, that this does revert to Wichita, I believe.
Twenty five years, I believe, Justin.
Believe that's twenty forty seven, if I remember correctly on that.
Yeah. And again, that can be exercised sooner than that, but on that date, that's the date that's currently set in there, but there is a way to make that happen at any time. And so should we work with everybody involved and that they want to, you know, accelerate that date, that could be done. But twenty forty seven is the date that's currently in there. And in one of the conversations we've had in the last couple of years, I know that exploration place, I think, was interested in even extending beyond that date because we've had a good relationship with them over the years. Again, you know, more than eighty three million dollars of support. Um, the county has been good to exploration place. The question is, should we, and I, the way I see this is, should we raise taxes in two thousand twenty five this year? For next year's budget to fund very valuable resource for this community, especially in light of the fact that we've, we've done all this work so far and they actually have funds available. Should we support a tax increase that is beyond a reasonable amount to give them additional funding this year? That's the challenge. And you know, I, you know, I mean, I like my word choices here. But this is, this is, you know, we, I'm, I'm, I'm sure like everybody else, I'm hearing from everybody. You've got to get a handle on your spending. You've got to reduce your spending. And where do you start? They must always go to culture wreck first and you know, I don't think the zoo has this type of funding, uh, fund set aside. I don't think they do. And plus, that was also voter approved, so it's different. There is nothing else in the budget that has this level of funding that even could potentially be on the list that helped solve this in this uh tax challenge. So don't know where else in the budget to go. I'm open to other ideas, but I just think it's, um, if we're, if we're serious about getting our our handle on on our tax increases year over year, this is the type of conversation we have to have. And it's uncomfortable. It's not fun. I don't know what else to do. And I'm, I'm asking for help, but again, to to support this budget of five point five percent, I am not comfortable personally doing that. I'm okay with four point five percent. And even with that, I think there's lots of people in this community to say four point five percent is more than inflation. Um, that is, uh, but you have to do more, find another way to even lower it below that. And so I'm not sure what the right answer is. I I think I've given you guys a balanced opportunity here. It's not, it's not comfortable, but nothing's comfortable. The tax, the tax increase is not comfortable to me either. So not funding nine one one to the level that they want is not comfortable. This is a balance between those, between those things. Mr. Chairman, I'll go on whenever you're ready for it.
Go ahead.
Let's go on. Hey, then uh page one hundred and seventy four of the Wichita budget book I've got right here. I noticed that Wichita provides in two thousand twenty six budget, um, which is actually an increase over what they had in two thousand twenty four budget. But anyway, this next year, they are providing nine thousand two hundred and fifty six dollars to the Wichita, Wichita Arts Council. Our budget includes thirteen thousand three hundred dollars to Wichita Arts Council. I've asked my advisory board, um, at the last collaboration meeting that I had, whether they thought we should, the county should be funding the Wichita Arts Council. We've, we've had this debate before. I believe, I may be wrong. I need to go back and look at the numbers. I believe they were ten thousand dollars back in two thousand fifteen and the two thousand sixteen budget, they were cut to zero. I believe. And the year after that, when the commission changed, they went back to fifteen thousand dollars per year. And it's been a fifteen thousand dollars per year since then. Um, this budget is a percent reduction. And again, nothing wrong with handling it that way. But if you just do a five percent per year or ten percent per year, whatever, you'll never get to zero because the way it I would rather take it out as a, as a as a dollar figure, that's not necessarily a round percentage. But anyway, this is a fair, it's a fairly small amount of money for our budget. But there's a principle behind this. We don't have, there are other cities across our county that have arts budget, you know, money that goes to arts within their community. But the Wichita Arts Council, in my opinion, is is Wichita centric. It should not be a county funded organization. Um, it is unfair to other cities. It's taking money from places like Cheney, for example, or Sedgwick. And if you will, giving it to the Wichita Arts Council, I've never seen a a report back that says how this money was used um, to see that there, there's actually a return on the investment. They have calculations, talk about returning investments, always very, very large. Um, I don't know what their total budget is. But I am bothered by the fact that Wichita is only providing ninety two fifty six or providing thirteen three hundred in this recommended budget. My recommendation is I would move that we eliminate the thirteen thousand three hundred dollars to the Wichita Arts Council. And again, not that I'm trying to be mean, but where in the budget can you trim? This money can be used for part of a nine one one person, for example. We have to be judicious in how we spend our money. So there, I'll have a motion to eliminate funding for the Wichita Arts Council, Wichita Arts Council. Again, that's a one thirteen thousand three hundred dollar reduction. Any questions on that? I would have another motion that we reduce the funding for the Central County Fair Association. And again, right now, it's a, it's a very odd number because it's a, it's a percentage calculation. The budget, budget book today is twenty five thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. I would make a motion and I'm, I'm, I'm flexible to change this number. It's just, it's just a discussion. But I would move that we reduce that down to twenty two thousand dollars. It's a reduction of three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for Wichita for the Sedgwick County Fair Association. Again, a reduction of three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars from the recommended budget.
Questions?
Questions on that?
Okay, go ahead.
I'd further move that we eliminate one FTE position for the um, grade seventy IT manager position from the Division of Information Technology staffing table and reallocate the difference of one hundred and twenty three thousand seven hundred and thirty six dollars, including taxes and benefits back to the general fund.
Commissioner, do that was the first I'd heard of that one. Did, what was the logic behind this?
I just don't think it's needed right now.
Can you give those numbers one more time? One FTE?
It's a one FTE, uh, it's a grade seventy manager position from the Division of Information Technology Staffing Table, reallocate the difference of one hundred and twenty three thousand seven hundred and thirty six dollars. So one, two, three, seven, three, six.
And to be clear, this is not a filled position. This is the position that was going to be added in the budget. It came to you all as a decision package. So I I don't want the message out there that this is a riff of an existing employee.
Reduction is just simply limited to what we have.
Okay, so to be clear, the decision package was put into the recommended. Commissioners, how is asking that it be removed from the recommended? That's what we're entertaining?
Okay, I would further move that we eliminate one FTE, grade sixty one position for accreditation manager position from the emergency communication staffing table, reallocate the difference of eighty seven thousand nine hundred and seventy nine dollars, including taxes and benefits. This is, again, this is un, it's a new, it's a new position. This is a position that allows us to say we're accredited. I, I, I I, I think we're very, very good in nine one one. I think we do great work. I think Laura Forshe does wonderful work. Accreditation manager, in my opinion, helps us pat ourselves on the back. I, I don't, I, we need to have some, some external organization set standards for us and actually spend taxpayer money to let us know that we're meeting someone else's standards. We know what needs to be done. We know for good, we know for bad. I don't know that this accreditation manager is needed. It's a position that's nice to have. It's just not a need. My motion will be to eliminate that position as requested. I really would like some feedback from my colleagues here. You guys are if I'm going to do this next week on the bench, um, it'd be nice to know that you guys are all hateful of these ideas. Please tell me that now. Okay?
Well, I can say that on my end, this is getting this list and then going back. I'm going to call Scott and say, tell me what you want to do with this management position. How's it going to impact the organization? How's it impact the taxpayer? I'm going to call Laura and say, hey, is this accreditation manager going to be something that is going to be detrimental to your operations? Why do you want it? Why does this not make sense? And I'm going to balance the property tax implication with what the, what this looks like. Um, you know, and and balance what, and over the course of a six hundred million dollar budget, what eighty seven thousand dollars does to the, to the benefit of the taxpayer and what it does to the disadvantage of the taxpayer. And these are the conversations and running an organization our size that we have to have. Um, so I, I want to be able to give you feedback, but I want to make sure that I'm able to actually understand all that's going on in in these regards. So I apologize. I don't want you to take my silence as not caring. Um, I just want you to know that I'm I need to understand all these things on a better level.
Got you.
I appreciate the intent.
I have four more. These are, these are fairly easy. I move that we eliminate three positions that have been held vacant and unfunded on the county clerk and registered deeds staffing tables. This will reduce the FTE count in the general fund by three positions. Again, these are unfilled positions. They've been on the books for a long time. If, I guess, having had Lindsay speak with both the elected officials and they're okay with this change, it just cleans up our book a little bit.
Do you have a fiscal note on that? You can email it.
There is no fiscal note. So these are positions that were held, um, back during across the board reductions in the two thousand twelve budget cycle. So they have just been FTEs that have been sitting on the on the staffing table with no authority to fill and no dollars attached.
Cleaning it up.
Time. And so it just reduces the overall FTE count in your county general fund.
Thank you.
By eliminating those.
Questions on that?
No, that sense.
Next motion, I, within the community, within the community development, community programs budget. I move that we direct staff to do a competitive request for proposal process for providing transportation services for the Oaklawn area, including, I'm sorry, instead of allocating a funding specifically for Wichita Transit. If you look at the ridership of Oaklawn and the amount of money we're spending for that, again, I would argue it is important for those folks because they're using this money to get to work and things like that. However, the cost per rider is, is excessive. I believe we can do this through a voucher program or something else. And so I think we need to take a look at a way to make this a more efficient program. Um, I don't think it's efficient at all. It is important, but it's not efficient. So let's, uh, I would like to direct staff to develop, if you will, a competitive request for proposal process to changes to make more efficient.
Thirty some thousand, what's that number?
Thirty eight, seven, nine, five.
Thirty eight, seven, nine, five. Thank you.
I went and looked at the book.
Very good.
Then the next motion is I would move that we direct staff to begin the work necessary to place on a ballot question on the upcoming general election ballot regarding the dedicated funding stream of two mills annually for the sole purpose of funding stormwater management capital projects within Central County. Sounds like a lot of money. But this is what's needed. If people, if people want to solve stormwater problems in Central County, this is the funding stream they need to do this. Listen, I, we've been talking about this my entire time I've been on the commission. I don't support the per parcel fee because you want to talk about what's hard for lower income people. That is harder on lower income people because you're charging you know, a tiny little lot in, in the lowest income areas of our, of our community the same rate you're charging, if you will, a mansion property. That, that's what a per parcel fee would do. I don't think that's fair. A, a sales tax question would, my, my opinion is not also the right answer for this. Because a sales tax question means you're, you're, you're you're taxing people who are passing through for something that simply is a regional property problem or fixing a problem on people's properties. And the property tax, as much as I don't hate property tax, at least this is a fair uh, way to apportion the burden of this service to the people who can most afford it and have the greatest benefit. So a property tax would be a ballot question to do stormwater mitigations within Central County. This is the program we talked about where we would actually leverage cities to come up with stormwater projects. We would incentivize them with a partial payment from the county. We would also do unincorporated projects out of this fund. We'd have a stormwater advisory group that, if you will, prioritizes the projects of cities. And we, we estimate, cost estimate the, the return on investment. And they would, they would prioritize them from top to bottom. And we'd offer, if you will, based on funds available. Again, two mills is like a lot, but again, that's about fifteen million, about fourteen million and change per year that we would have available for stormwater program management, program solutions. In light of the billions of dollars worth of things we could do, this is a small amount of money to get us started.
Commissioner.
Question is, do people support the idea?
Question, is this, um, you're going to make a motion for this on budget day, but this has no budget impact?
It has no budget impact, but it's directing staff.
Would this be something, we're taking a new business item on sales tax conversation? Would this be brother, better place under a new business item for discussion or a staff meeting other than a motion on a budget? Day?
Um, in the past, we, we have had motions to direct staff to do certain things that relate to overall services of Sedgwick County. This is a typical, normal thing to do. And it does fit in within the budget discussion. We can do it differently if you would like, but I have no problem leaving this where it is in the budget discussion because it's part of a budget broader budget, budget discussion for this. So I, again, I'm trying to lower mill levy this year by one point one mills. The question is, you know, do people want some of their tax dollars to go towards, you know, in the past, there was Central County Zoo. They want some, it was a mill levy for aging services. Those are, we just put that in front of the people and said, what do people want us to do? They can direct their government one way or the other. If they put this on the ballot and it goes down, I might even vote no. I don't actually have a flooding, flooding problem where I live. I might vote no, but here's the deal. Uh, this is a very important topic. People want us to give them the option to get this fixed. If people vote no, and this goes down, which I expect it very well might go down, then when it floods, we'll go back and say, we gave you the opportunity to fund, if you will, a solution in our community. If, this is your government. We'll do whatever you guys tell us to do.
I guess my question is, if you are that pessimistic about something this important, maybe we spend a little time developing a better approach to communicate to the public. If this is important, this is a significant deal. And if you're not even sure you'd vote for it, and if you're not sure this would pass, maybe we spend a little time on something that's important to develop a marketing and messaging plan to the community.
Let me, um, let me say, we have to have a starting point. We've talked, we've talked for ten years and never got past the talking point.
I agree.
What this would do is create, if you will, a, a resolution that says, here's the language we're trying to talk about specifically. If you weren't change the language, that can come through discussion from community discussions, from commissioners, whatever. But what I want staff to do is, if you will, develop the entire program, get into a resolution format. So we have something to, so here's what the ballot question will look like. Here's what the funding will look like. Take it to your cabinet board meetings. Go take it to my collaboration board meeting. Um, take it to the city of Wichita. Um, let cities know, we, we don't want them to do fund their own stormwater programs. That's an important part of this.
Okay.
And so my opinion is to get it to the next level, we need to direct staff to do something.
Okay.
And again, I'm not saying it's even right. And I say, I say I may vote no. Personally, again, I know lots of people who have flooded this last year. Maybe I would vote yes. But at the end of the day, uh, I'm not sure what I would do. My point is, I'm not trying to sell it. I'm simply trying to get the proposal codified, so people have the option on a ballot to direct their government, which, what they want us to do. Go, yes, do something, or no, don't do something. Keep my taxes low. I'd rather have lower taxes and flooding, or I'd rather have higher taxes and a problem solve. So whichever way that people want to do, I'm okay with either. I, I, but this would direct staff to get it to the next level. So Lord will, and we can give, if it, if it's going to go forward, let's make progress. You have to get it towards moving towards a ballot. How do you do that? By the way, this, this does not require legislation. This one we can do from the commission.
Right.
So we don't, it, it, this is not, it's not as difficult as it sounds to get this on a ballot to give people the option of what they want us to do.
Kind of, I appreciate that. Right. Well, Commissioner Meister.
Lynn, can I ask you? What would fourteen million dollars a year do to solve flooding? What's the big number?
You know, uh, right off the bat in the first year, not a lot. But moving forward for fourteen million or so dollars a year, uh, would greatly help us, especially if we, it came along with recreation of something like this map to be able to direct us toward, uh, using, uh, starting to supplement uh, what cities are doing. uh, what cities are doing, uh, for stormwater, uh, also allowing us to, uh, administer a stormwater project. Um, it definitely puts us in the right direction to helping us with, uh, future flooding.
According to what I've been listening to, so all the, all the cities in the, the twenty cities in Wichita would still have to obligate their current flooding budgets to stormwater mitigation.
Correct. Uh, that would, if we could, uh, again, uh, as Commissioner Howell was noting, uh, we need to sit down with the cities and which is what we've already started to do. Um, SCAC, I've also had some sit down meetings with Derby and, and others, uh, to talk about getting them on board with stormwater quality and quantity measures that the city of Wichita and Central County are already, uh, implementing. If we can do that, I think that the second message, um, again, as Commissioner Howell said, we're not looking to steal their stormwater money or to, uh, supplant, uh, what any measures they've already started. Um, I know several, uh, communities have that, not near twenty. I want to say there's about less than half of that have already done that. But we would want to support that work and to supplement that funding so that, uh, it works, you know, not just within, uh, you know, one's particular city corporation, the corporate limits of a city, but the whole area around it. And that's what a SMAB or a, a entity similar to SMAB would do. Um, to be able to, uh, align and cooperate with that funding.
Yeah. And I believe Johnson County has a similar mechanism to incentivize cities and communities around them to uh, support projects with, uh, incentives from the county government. They actually have a sales tax that, uh, I think it's, is a tenth of a cent, tenth of a percent. I believe it was a tenth of a percent. Again, a tenth of, by the way, a tenth of a percent here would be fourteen million dollars. So if you don't like the two mills and you would rather do a tenth of a percent, we could do that as a separate question. But that then requires legislation once again. And any questions is, is that a fairer way to do this? Again, lest someone, uh, splits up this recording and says, I'm advocating for a tax increase. I'm not. I'm advocating for people to direct their government. And I'm simply saying, how do you want to do this? If you want to do this and we need a funding stream, is the sales tax a better choice? That's maybe another discussion. Um, and since I just mentioned the word sales tax, let me just be really clear. I'm not advocating for in tax increase on that either. I'm advocating for is a shifting from property taxes to sales taxes for the the discretionary parts of our budget that frankly are things like Central County Zoo and Exploration Place and other a cultural, community development, uh, parts of our budget. To give them a dedicated funding stream that's voter approved, it has a sunset built in. And what that would do is it would lower our property tax levy by maybe four, more than four mills. So again, if all of these things were to pass, imagine this one, uh, two mills, but we saw a reduction this year's budget of one point one mills. The sales tax piece passes next year and it's another reduction of four mills. And you're seeing about, you know, a, a four, a, a, a five, you know, five mil reduction in the property tax levy, uh, then you add in two mills back in. So still a reduction of three mills. My point is uh, these changes together, my, my opinion should be looked at almost comprehensively. If you look at each one of them independently by itself, you might say this is a tax increase, but that's almost not fair because there's a lot more to the story here. I'm trying to reduce the mill levy overall. But I'm also trying to create a revenue stream that makes sense. Again, property taxpayers are the ones who are paying for infrastructure. They have, they're the ones that have the risk, they're the ones that have the insurance costs. They're the ones that have the damages if they don't, if they don't do good stormwater management. And so again, I don't love property taxes. I'm not trying to advocate in any way for property tax increase. So I am saying is the people need to have the options put before them. They need to understand what we're talking about. So with that, uh, any questions on number eight, stormwater ballot question?
Okay, appreciate it.
Now, my final resolution, my final, uh, motion would be to reallocate two hundred thousand dollars from project R two, R three twenty-eight. I did this last year. It was the Northwest Expressway right of way acquisition. Reallocating that from the, uh, Northwest Expressway to the Arc ninety-five. So it's, um, I would move that we reallocate two hundred thousand from project R three twenty-eight. Northwest, Northwest Expressway to the Arc ninety-five project. And I would encourage Commissioner from District Two to consider another two hundred thousand dollars if he would feel so moved to do so. And my opinion on this is ninety-five has real viability. I believe we're seeing discussions happen in, in Congress to, to fund this project. I think, I used to say, it would happen in my lifetime. I don't think that's necessarily true now. I think it is, it is advanced further than I thought it would. I don't think Northwest Expressway is viable personally. So I'd rather see this money allocated to something I think actually has a greater potential enhancement for this community and is desperately needed. So with that, I would make that motion. Any questions or comments on that?
Is the Arc ninety-five fund set up yet?
We do have a fund for Arc ninety-five dollars, uh, which all, uh, the cities, partnering cities are putting in on an annual basis.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
So in the past, um, we had been putting a million towards property acquisition on Northwest Expressway. And then last year we took a hundred thousand of that to help fund the study for Northwest Expressway, right?
Right.
Yes.
No, last, the study came from economic development because that was an operating cost. We could not use sales tax funds for that study.
Thank you.
Still a balance of a million a year that's been dedicated towards.
Correct.
Whatever. So the proposal that Commissioner House says is take two hundred thousand of that and put it in the, towards the Arc ninety-five.
Okay, that's correct.
Just to clarify, and, and, um, your request was to make an additional two hundred thousand as well? I guess I didn't quite.
It's to reallocate. In, in, in fairness, the million dollars to the Northwest Expressway has a state match. So we put in a million and the statement's in a million. So there, there's two million in a year if we were just to go with the, the draft budget today. Um, the total fund in there is, correct me if I'm wrong, it's around twenty million dollars we've allocated over state and, state and county money together is about twenty million dollars. It's a billion, maybe two billion dollar project. And, and again, the state, the state and the US Congress have not committed any type of allegiance to this project at all. That, that's why the study needs to happen. So we're throwing money at something. We don't even know it's going to happen. Okay? And I would argue this has been discussed for, uh, for decades. And, uh, we're still so far from actually having anything serious to talk about. And then talking about a highway that goes to Goddard that has stoplights right behind it. It, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I, I think that the problems down south, the traffic down south is such a big problem that it is a, it certainly is a, uh, a viable project. I think that Congress is already talking about it. We've already, i, it is moving forward. It's a much less expensive project all, overall. So what this does is take two hundred thousand of the million dollars, reallocate that. We've asked the state to partner with us and to match that. I'm not sure where we are with that match request. Um, but we potentially are giving up a match fund for Northwest Expressway. Go ahead.
I was just going to note that, uh, up until twenty twenty-five, uh, the, uh, state has matched us dollar for dollar, uh, that has been, so it's been a total of ten million dollars that's been going toward, uh, the acquisition of right of way. Uh, now since twenty seventeen or eighteen, I believe, um, last, in twenty twenty-five, um, with the reallocation of funds, um, they, they only matched eight hundred thousand dollars to our eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, they've inquired if we continue, if we, they have inquired if we do intend to continue with a reduced funding. Um, we're in limbo with the state right now because we're due for a new contract. I do have concerns because obviously that's a, that's a four hundred thousand dollar hit, uh, that, that took in twenty twenty-five. Um, I've asked the state to consider a one-year extension of the existing contract because we are in the middle, we're just now starting a major investment study for, uh, the Northwest Expressway. I do support both Arc ninety-five and Northwest Expressway as individual projects. Um, but we won't know the results of the MIS until next summer. Um, we're going through the process now. We just met for scoping of that process. Um, so I don't want to go into another five-year contract with the perception that we're favoring another project over, uh, Northwest Expressway. Um, yeah, I, I, um, it, it's just an awkward time right now, um, especially, uh, in having discussions of trying to extend the existing contract, knowing we don't have an intent to fill that one million dollars. I don't know. I've asked, I have not received an answer on how that's going to be perceived, um, uh, at state level, um, and what they would do with a, I believe, uh, they've agreed to talk about a one-year extension, um, but they're not interested in doing a five-year until the MIS is, uh, continued or the results of the MIS lead us to going one way or the other.
Uh, again, I would, I would say if the state had some type of commitment, I would not have a problem here, but I feel like this is just throwing a million dollars away that will never, ever result in infrastructure. You know, to, to do a portion of this highway, uh, you know, for with money that's available, it, it, it isn't really, you have to do the whole thing end to end. Otherwise it doesn't make sense. And, um,
If, if I might clarify, this is a right of way purchase. Forty percent of the right of way has been purchased. So you're kind of hampering on something that people that live out in our area have been talking about for a long time. It's, it's something needs to happen. We purchased forty percent of this right of way. And the people that are setting in this protective overlay are wondering what they can do with the assets that they own. Um, which is why the study is very, very important. It's incredibly important. I support both Arc ninety-five and Northwest Expressway. And I envision a day with some bold leadership, um, sometimes we don't have, um, that we can connect these two things maybe one day and, and have a real nice party all around the community. Um, but it's going to take bold visionary leadership, uh, to get something like this done. So I don't fully agree that it's not a viable project. Um, they used to not say that about Northwest Express or the K ninety-six Expressway too. It is a viable project. People in our neck of the woods deeply care about this. Um, and when we've wasted over twenty million dollars just sitting around for the last couple of decades, I think people are fed up and ready to move forward. So, but I support both projects.
Mr. Chairman, and I, and I respectfully would just, you know, point out, if we, if this highway ever is a reality, then it was not a waste. But the question is, will it become a reality or not? We won't. We don't know. And in the meantime, this does add burden to our budget and it's a million dollars. I would actually motion to, to, to defund this entirely for a year or two till we have some commitment from the state of Kansas. The problem is it's the sales tax funds. It doesn't help our property.
It doesn't help, yeah. So I would also say that, again, when we look at taxpayers, we've spent over twenty million dollars of their dollars just to all of a sudden say, we're done. What does it say to the previous twenty million dollars that we spent of taxpayer funds that we haven't stewered that very well? I don't think that's a wise decision. I think that, I think it's a bad decision to say that we don't care about the twenty million dollars that's already been spent on the project. Um, I do not think that's good fiscal conservatism.
So I'll just wrap this up and say that Arc ninety-five is, is going to have some costs and some things have to happen if it's going to move forward. And I think timeline wise, Arc ninety-five doesn't, doesn't require a study at this point. We know it's a viable project. It's just, it's just, it's a funding challenge. And we have Congress right now that's, that's working on getting that funding. So as this project develops, having some money set aside for that is, I think is a good planning. Um, I think Arc ninety-five is, uh, so much more affordable. It is, uh, not a question of whether it will happen. It's just a matter of when. Are the, the Northwest Expressway, again, as much as I don't want to tell people we've wasted any money, because I don't, I don't like that message at all. Um, at the end of the day, if there's highways not built, again, it's billions of dollars. If the highway is not built, then ultimately that's, that's the conclusion we'll have, we'll, we'll be left with. So question is how, how deep do you want to dig that hole? I want some kind of commitment from, from Washington or from the state of Kansas. Where we continue to throw money at this because I think that, that we deserve, our taxpayers deserve some assurance that their money's not being wasted.
Agreed. Appreciate that. Okay. Other thoughts? Comments? Mr. Howard, that's all, all, all on your end, right? Okay. Everybody want something else to add to budget? Hey Tom, I think that's it. Nine AM tomorrow morning? See you then.